I'm going to say tonight is going to have to be a, um, meeting that is expeditiously put up. Um, because I'm gonna lose my clerk at seven thirty, uh, due to her, uh, her brother having a surgery tonight. And I'm also gonna lose another colleague, Mr. Martin, he had to leave at seven thirty. So I'm sure we can get everything done without losing or skipping a beat. Uh, I wanna say, um, I'm glad to see all of you. I'd like to see more. Uh, but at this point in time, I want you to either cut off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. And that would satisfy the situation of the, um, cell phones going off. Um, at this point in time, uh, this is the regular council meeting, Tuesday, June 2nd, 2015, at six thirty P.M. Uh, we are now in the, uh, East Cleveland City Hall, in the council chambers, which is the courtroom. Madam Clerk, would you call the row?
Counselor King?
Present.
Counselor Martin?
Present.
Counselor Baker? Counselor Wheeler?
Present.
Counselor Thomas?
Present. Madam, uh, Clerk?
At this time, we need a motion to amend the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move that we amend the agenda to move the legislation up to under the, uh, uh, remarks of the public on the agenda items below that.
Second.
Okay. May I have a vote on that?
Counselor King?
Yay.
Counselor Martin?
Yay.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yay.
Counselor Thomas?
Yay.
The agenda will be so amended?
I want everybody to know that my vice president got up out of his seat to do his, uh, due diligence. I told him to sit down there. But, I didn't wanna get sick. I thank you for that, okay?
Director, could you please sit over here now? Because our council vice president's got a really bad cold if you want to sit at this end. Over here, over here. You can sit over here by council president.
Come on.
Uh, he can still sit over there.
Oh, no.
But you can sit over here.
Okay, um, remarks of the public on agenda items only, is that where I am now?
Yes. Each person has three minutes only. We, uh, and the time limit is full fifteen minutes, so please start stepping to the front.
Are there any remarks from the public?
Yeah.
On agenda items only?
Oh, yeah.
On agenda items only.
I guess what I'm asking on this is, um, the transfer station. What I've been hearing is, has been confusing me. So I'm hearing a dump, and I'm hearing a transfer station. And, um, if anything is to be left there for any, any substantial length of time, other than just, you know, drop it off, change it to another truck and, and move it out, then, um, then I'm in opposition. If we're talking about, you know, something that's gonna just be changed from one, one vehicle to another and taken somewhere else, that's one thing, but, but if anything is staying there, and that's... I, I just want clarification of that, and I want it clear that if anything is staying there more than twenty-four hours or thirty-eight hours, or something brief like that, then I, it isn't what I thought it was, and I...
Staying where, Patricia?
At any of these places, uh, the transfer station or the other...
The Noble Road situation?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Council President. Uh, I had asked the question most at the last meeting, uh, if there were royalties at some point as a result of this development. I think, uh, Mr. Mayor did nod his head and say yes, but I never did get an answer. So I would like an answer to that.
Thanks.
Can you repeat the questions we had? I beg your pardon?
Can you repeat the question that was asked?
If there were any royalties as a result of the new development on Eddie Road? Would, would the city receive any royalties? I know they're paying, uh, lease agreement or rent agreement or something like that, but will there be any royalties later on?
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Your name is Paco Stanberry, please stand before our green mark.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Uh, this, uh, resolution thirty fifteen. I'm wondering, we all live here, most of us live here in East Cleveland, and we see how the city is. It's already a dump. So this place over here, this waste, what they don't wanna expand. All the people that live on that street, and, and where I live also, it's enough, it already polluted. So why you wanna put that, you know, expand that and have that up there as a dump? Waste, uh, East Cleveland Waste Transfer. I don't think that's feasible for the city and for the health of the residents of East Cleveland. I'm opposed to that.
One more person?
One more person.
Well, that's, that's too bad, 'cause there's a lot of people that wanna talk about this issue. Dan Ray, this drill struggles for four one two news. Gone with those people there, down Eddie Road, they're pissed at what's going on. That Dan Ray decided that he would do the construction already. I don't know if you guys knew this, but he's already building. He's got the whole place, they excavated all that stuff. What gave him the right to do that? You haven't even passed the resolution. I don't understand. It's just total disrespect that construction's going down there. I know it's, I know that, that there, he's one of the people that's had these people, you know, trying to do this construction behind the scenes. But it, it's, it's already been put out in the open. And if you've gone on four four one two news dot com, you know that they threatened me, which I put on the website, doesn't scare me. I'm more worried about the people down there. The people who are gonna face the same stuff that's going on at Noble, which we're, we're now battling. I did a whole, I was up there today with the people from Noble. An eighty-year-old person who says she can't open her windows up. So, we wanna know if you're gonna put this thing back into committee, so you can figure out what to do, because Dan Ray's already taken possession of this property. And it should go back to committee. I don't know where Mansell Baker is, but he should be here for sure. And it's one of the things that needs to be brought up, and this, this, this thing needs to be derailed in its tracks. Because there was something criminal, bad that, that happened, that allowed them, unless you guys cut a backroom deal, that allowed Dan Ray and his bulldozers to construct all that property behind there. We wanna know, inquiry minds wanna know.
Amazing.
So, we are held to the limit for tonight, because we're going to lose two, uh, people, and it won't be nobody here. My clerk is leaving at seven thirty, um, my colleague is leaving at seven thirty. I won't have any of that.
And I appreciate that, but they knew that when they took this position as council, so they must be here to hear what the citizens said. So their first duty is here.
I understand that.
So let's take care of city business, and that's why we are...
Come on, amazing, get to your points. Go ahead, you made your point, go ahead. You're wasting time.
Well, you interrupted me.
Your time will start as of now, Mr. Amazing.
Thank you. Um, I'm concerned in reference to Resolution thirty fifteen. Uh, it's my understanding, there seemed to be some work going on, and I know that the legislation did not pass, then you turn around within the same, uh, the same, um, meeting, and repassed it from a nearby telling you what to do, and that's totally illegal. Once it was voted upon, that was it. But anyway, if, uh, it's my understanding, they do not have the property in their possession. So, and I'm wondering whom gave them the authorization to start demolition, or rebuilding, or whatever, my understanding they are doing there. So if we gotta do things, let's do it right. And, you know, we have so many times, and I'll say again, so many of us have gone to jail for illegal mess. And so, and I don't want this man to get caught up in something he invested in the city. Do it right, and then we all can reap the benefits. And you're gonna reap the benefits of doing things illegal, and I'm gonna call it every time I see it. So do what is right, and not, uh, uh, what have you. So you can let people coerce you into doing things or what have you. Some of you know, you've been there, you've been there, we sat there. Some of you, almost just by the skin of your tooth, didn't go to jail before. So please, let's, let's do what is right. That's all I ask you to do.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Cassandra McDonald. Uh, I think in a nutshell, what the people...
What's your address here?
It is eighteen eighty-five Taylor Road, apartment four fourteen. Um, I think that in a nutshell, what we're looking for is some resolve in regards to the process that was used to have the land acquired, as well as what is the solution to the problem with the contamination. I think that's all of our concerns in here, and I think that the problem is, we haven't been, um... People feel that council has not enforced right in stating how this implementation occurred. How did this process start? Because there's ordinances, the council has to approve it and so forth, after the mayor makes the recommendation, council approves it and so forth. And we just think it was a big piece of that process that was omitted. So if council or mayor can elaborate on that, how it came about, and how we're gonna solve the issue with the contamination, I think we would reach some type of resolve.
When you talk about contamination at Eddie Road...
That does lie, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh, we're moving around along. Um, what is the next minutes to be approved? The agenda review, the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, we change it.
Oh, I'm sorry, legislation.
Legislation, let's take right to it.
Okay.
Resolution number thirty fifteen, second reading. The resolution authorizing the mayor to expand the lease agreement with Dan Ray Construction LLC for the East Cleveland Waste Transfer Station located at sixteen fifty Eddie Road, sixteen ten, sixteen twenty-six Eddie Road, and sixteen oh two Eddie Road. Includes the East Cleveland, Ohio, for site development. That includes excavation, demolition, and landscaping projects. Requested by Community Development, sponsored by Councilor Brandon King.
Discussion? Brandon?
Thank you, Council President. This has been in the committee at agenda review, and it's come before council, that's last council meeting. So we've discussed this thoroughly. We've had a representative from Dan Ray here. The mayor has talked, and it's been, uh, extended conversation around this, uh, legislation. Tonight, we also have the mayor here, and we have Tim from Dan Ray Construction here. There's been a number of questions and concerns, and I can answer most of them, or I'll yield to the mayor, because he's here, if he would like to answer. What are your pledges?
Okay. Uh, the history of the Eddie Road site is it has, it is today, the service department, the service garage, the service vehicles with gasoline, rock salt. Uh, in the past, it's where the city or a private company transferred trash. Now, trash, meaning garbage, includes food, includes cleaners, includes things, pretty much everything but paint and tires. That's what trash and rubbish includes. This is the former site where all that trash transfer was done. So this area has had a history of that. In East Cleveland, we wanted to encourage businesses to locate here, and we wanted to allow some of these assets that the city has to generate money. We all agree that that was a good thing to do. What we have in Dan Ray Company is an entity that doesn't deal in garbage, which is food and, and things like that, that can spoil and, and attract other bad things. Materials that could be dangerous to people's health. They don't deal in that, they're not supposed to deal in that. What they deal in is demolition and construction materials. So aluminum, wood, construction materials that are recycled from things where, where you see houses demolished and the materials are recycled, that's what Dan Ray deals in. They don't deal in trash, they don't deal in things that spoil, they're not supposed to deal in things that contaminate. There are agencies set up to deal with that, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the city, and building and housing. We regulate those types of things. They've been doing it there for about eight months, and they've experienced some success. Now, prior to their doing it for eight months, the city council was presented an option to allow this business to lease. Dan Ray made a presentation, city council voted on it, they therefore had the permission to operate this business. It's been at Eddie Road. After some success, they want to expand. This lease, this piece of legislation tonight, is to allow Dan Ray to expand the footprint, the physical footprint of their operation, in where it currently is at Eddie Road. And Eddie Road, again, has the history of being the place where garbage was transferred. Today, it's not garbage, it is construction and demolition material. Uh, so council, as far as we can go, to the question of royalties. Uh, Dan Ray is paying lease payments. There are no royalties, meaning something from the profits or something per ton. In the past, there were royalties when it was operated as a trash or garbage transfer. Every time the truck tipped, there was a tipping fee or a royalty. There is none of that now. It is a straight lease, uh, with Dan Ray paying to the city a certain amount every month. And again, this is an expansion of the agreement the council approved, probably eight months or so.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
There was a question raised, and I would like maybe Dan Ray to respond to if appropriate. Uh, I made notes for some of the people who spoke earlier. That was, uh, construction already being done before we approved the expansion. And I'd like to have that responded to, 'cause I think it's a legitimate question that needs to be answered. So if it's proper, Council President, to have Dan Ray come and speak to that, so we deal with this thing intelligently and factually. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember. Thank you for inviting me. In response to the question as far as construction that's on the site, at this particular time, we have been granted by the city to make minimal improvements to the site. When we first arrived at the site, um, there were things that needed to be cleaned up. There were old tires. As a result of that, um, you know, when you stack old tires up, rats are in, you know, different types of, of insects, bugs, which causes a problem. Before, the, the county, I think, was aiding the city in trying to, you know, resolve this problem. But when we got there, we took it upon our own to go ahead and clean the facility up. The demolition that you see going on at the site right now, is some demolition of old dilapidated buildings that were ready to fall down, actually. Um, so what we did, we demolished those buildings, we cleaned up the site, and we are still in the process of doing that, and that's probably what most of you see today. Um, we try to keep it to a minimum. Most of our operations are to the rear of the facility, so nobody actually sees it, you know, being done on the, on the street side of there. Um, we try to keep the dust to, to a minimum. Um, we try to keep the construction noise down, so that nobody, you know, gets, uh, bothered. There are some residents, uh, across the street, which, uh, which live there. So I've, I've had a chance to talk to them, and, you know, explain to us too, what we're doing at the site at this particular time. You will see our vehicles moving in and out of the site. Uh, we have begun to use it, and as the mayor brought out, we are, um, recycling the construction materials there. Two-by-fours, old doors, uh, ceiling materials, which is brought into the site, automatically recycled and carried out of the site. Um, we, we normally like to do this within a forty-eight to seventy-two hour period, so that it doesn't, um, so, so that there's not a large amount of it falling property at any one point in time. We really haven't had any complaints, you know, to this point, as far as the, the facility is concerned. And, and please don't get our facility...
Mixed up.
Mixed up with the Noble Road facility, because what they're doing over there on Noble Road, I have no idea. I don't know what they're doing over there. I took a look at it, and that facility, um, and I don't know if they're calling it a transportation or exactly what they're doing over there, but, uh, you know, that's between them and the city. But as far as our operations are concerned, um, you know, hopefully I've explained it where everybody, everybody understands, pretty much.
What about just for clarification? The demolition that you're doing right now, is that in order? Is that a violation of any law or anything like that, in terms of what you're doing?
No, sir, no, sir. We're given permission to demolish the buildings. It's within the current footprint that we are leasing from the city at this particular point. In fact, the city also encouraged us to help them, you know, to take down the facility, because it was almost falling down. The expansion, um, that we currently want includes some buildings that are dilapidated. I mean, they're, they're ready to fall down. Um, I don't know how long they've been standing there, from my understanding, they have been existing for a long, long time. I had a chance to look in one of them, and I tell you, it's some, it's, it's, it's a lot in there. So again, we have to go in there, clean it out. Um, we also have to remove all the asbestos. We have to build and move all the asbestos in and then tear it down. And then what we plan on doing is rebuilding on the street side, something that is what they call a street scape, which is, uh, um, it will, it will have curb appeal. I think that most of the residents will, will be happy with, with what we're doing. Uh, right now, we are, uh, doing all the blueprints, all of the necessary things that we have to do, excuse me, to present it to, uh, the city, uh, planning so that they'll be able to approve it. So I'm sure that, uh, along this process, it will be kept well informed.
I'd like, I'd like to say one thing, um, I'm going to...
Just for clarification, Dan Ray, the building for your expansion, in terms of Legislation thirty fifteen, those, the building is still standing, you haven't torn it down, because it's...
No.
No?
The city has not given me permission to do that.
And that's what we're gonna be voting on now for you to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I want to explain also, uh, to Mr. Dan Ray, I'm going nowhere. You're still on the hot seat. Um, I want to explain that many, many years, that building, both of those buildings have been standing there on the edge of Eddie Road, just when you're coming, going up to, wanna go to hate. Uh, we had an engineer, Mr. Recatelli, who for years has come to the council or asked for money to tear down those, um, buildings along there, because they were a health hazard, and it needed to come down. But the money was not there to, um, uh, give to anyone. We've had, uh, other individuals come in, and one guy was going to, uh, wanted to get involved with the waste transfer, but something happened, and he didn't, couldn't follow through. Also, I want everybody to know that I don't live up on the hill. I live right around the corner from the Waste Transfer Station, right near Patterson Park. So I live in the valley, and I, I took a tour when they first was beginning to do all of this. I took a tour, I wanted to know what was happening and why it was happening. Not only did I take a tour, but I had my clerk and myself go through, and I'm sorry to say, I'm not sorry to say this, but I'm proud to say that we went through his history, uh, his reputation, and everybody that we talked to said he was a straight-up guy, and he did business according to, uh, ethics and all those, uh, situations that needed to be done. So when I vote, I will be voting, not with my conscience, but I will be voting because I feel that there is not a fear of this area. I do have a concern about the other area, and I don't want people getting that area mixed up with what's going on down here, because we were talking about, uh, thirty fifteen. And when that other area comes up, or it's not on our agenda, I will be talking about that also. That area was not supposed to be what it turned out to be. When we voted, when this council voted, we voted exactly on what was in the legislation for that property. That individual sold that property and brought in something else. And we will be dealing with that, I just talked to, um, the person today. So, but that, in essence, is what we did for Dan Ray's, uh, area. I wanna thank, uh, the council, uh...
Want, 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 want to comment?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for taking on the challenge of coming into the city and helping us get the service area together.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Counselor King?
Yay.
Counselor Martin?
Yay.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yay.
Counselor Thomas?
Yay.
Passes. Resolution number thirty-two fifteen, emergency. A resolution in support of the return of Marine Sergeant Elizabeth Perez, United States Marine Corps husband from Mexico to the United States, so that they can be reunited as family, in order for them to raise their minor children together, and declaring an emergency. Requested by Council President Barbie Chae Thomas, sponsored by Councilor Holt.
Ms. Perez? I didn't know you, because you don't have your uniform on, but that's alright. Now we know you're a real female, and the Trump of the service.
Real person, huh?
I know, I know. Come up here, please. We got... Oh, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna do what we gotta do, and my clerk says I gotta keep it legal. I don't wanna go to jail, Ms. Amazing.
Let's vote on it, Congress.
Alright.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's vote on it, Congress.
Yes.
Make motion, discussion?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. I forgot, is, is there any discussion on this?
No.
Um, on Perez?
Yes.
You want to?
Okay, so the vote, Counselor King?
Did you read it?
I've already been reading too.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
Yay.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yay.
Counselor Thomas?
Yay.
Passes unanimously?
And I also wanted to say, it's a pleasure, and, and I just feel so grateful. For a long time, the flags were not flying, and because of all the excitement and everything that surrounded you, and your pursuit for the issue that you have, the flag is now flying above. And I am so grateful, and I know the residents of East Cleveland is grateful. We have the United States of America flag, and we had a woman coming up here. Um, and that makes me proud. Um, so I wanna shake your hand...
Thank you.
And say good luck. And say good luck. And if my colleagues want to say anything, if my colleagues want to say anything, I'd be happy to let you do this, and I'll read the resolution. I have my glasses on. The resolution is in support of the return Marine Sergeant Elizabeth Perez, USMCS husband from Mexico to the United States, so that they can be reunited as a family in order for them to raise their minor children together and declaring an emergency. Whereas Staff Sergeant Elizabeth Perez, USMC, was born in East Cleveland, Ohio in nineteen seventy-eight, and lived with her family on Allen Dale between Euclid and Paris Avenue, and has lived in the city of Cleveland since. And whereas she served our country with honor and distinction, both in the Ohio Army, National Guard, and the US Marine Corps, for the total of ten years. And whereas she and her husband, Marcos, have lived apart since the June of two thousand ten, when Marco was deported to Mexico after traffic, after traffic style, and they are on the parents, they are the parents of two young boys, age five and four, who have spent their entire lives apart from their death. And whereas the children know him only through daily phone calls and Skype, for the past five years and a couple of short visits to Mexico. And Ms. Perez struggles economically near poverty, and also emotionally, without the support of her husband. Whereas Ms. Perez is a combat veteran who rallies, who relies on support from her eighty percent service connection disability, and receives weekly care at the Sid Cleveland VA Hospital, and is therefore unable to move to Mexico because the medical care she needs would be unavailable to her. Whereas the children, whereas their children need support of their father, so that they can thrive and reach their fullest potential. And whereas the Obama administration recognizes that a special debt is owed to military veterans, as outlined in a twenty thirteen memo released by the Department of Ohio Homeland Security, which states, "We as a nation have made a commitment to our veterans, veterans, to support and care for them. It is a commitment that begins in enlistment and continues as they become veterans." And whereas, in Ms. Perez's singular mission to reunite, reunite with her family, has forced a unpromised bureaucracy and a difficult officials, and the effect has taken away from her ability to be all she can be for her children and community. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Perez will be assets to our community, and each passing day that this family is separated intensifies their despair and longing. Without their father, the children will suffer a disadvantage in their upbringing, and whereas the council respectfully urges that this family be reunited in most expeditious manner, and possible minor infractions be waived by the Immigration and Naturalization Service, INS, as well as the US Customs Court, and Mr. Marco Perez be released into the United States, so that the Perez can raise their minor children together and live as a family. Whereas the council supports their critical humanitarian gesture, which will ensure the proper care and health, not only of their children, but Staff Sergeant Elizabeth Perez too. Whereas the resolution, this resolution, continuing an emergency measure for immediate preservation of the public desire for the health and safety of the Perez family. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of East Cleveland, Ohio, four and fifth, incurring section one, that our elected officials encourage the agents and administration within the Department of the Homeland Security, USCIS, the White House, and any relevant agency to work expeditiously to assist Veteran Staff Sergeant Elizabeth Perez in any capacity needed to immediately return her husband to the United States to reunite Perez's family of Cleveland, Ohio, so that Ms. Perez and her daughter and sister of City of East Cleveland can enjoy the fullest she needs and earn a veteran of these United States of America. This is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the city council, and that all of such deliberations of this council and of any of these committees, and resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. That this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure for public interest and health, safety, and welfare of the Perez family, provided receives the affirmative vote of four-fifths of all members elected to council, and shall take effect and enforce immediately upon passage and approved by the mayor. Otherwise, it shall be effective and be enforced, and thereafter, earliest period allowed. But I am with you one hundred percent.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. I'll make it real brief, because I know that was long, but I just want to thank all the residents, I want to thank the city council, the mayor, Gerald, for stopping us when we're walking down the street. I've been struggling with this injustice for five years. I hear a lot of justifications why it's okay, but it's not okay. It's an injustice and it's wrong, period. There's no reason why this is justified, that it's okay. And I really appreciate this resolution, and I'm gonna use this resolution in my battle for my husband to come back. And thank you all for allowing me to have this resolution. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Moving right along. Where are we? Minutes to be approved, the agenda review, May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen?
Madam Chairman, I move that the minutes of May fourteenth, agenda view be approved.
Second.
Councilor King?
Yay.
Councilor Martin?
Yay.
Councilor Willer?
Yay.
Councilor Thomas?
Yay.
Reports and announcements for the mayor?
Thank you. We had a discussion on the Eddie Road situation. Council, I'm sure you're aware by now, that East Cleveland, with its many homes in need of demolition, we've received, or we will soon receive, a million dollars from Cuyahoga County. We will demolish just over one hundred vacant and abandoned dilapidated structures, which on our residential streets will ease the burden of those who have to live next to our sensitive, empty, abandoned houses. So, we do that for our residents, and we do that for aesthetics, and we hope that it helps. So, thank you, council, for your support. Unfortunately, our budget situation is such that we will continue to make cuts. Council is well aware that as individuals depart, there is job sharing that goes on, responsibilities are transferred, in some cases, when a full-time